Hi, everyone. It looks like everyone is here, so we'll get going and call the meetings in order. Are we in compliance with open meetings laws, Maida?
Yes.
Thank you, and can you take a roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zer?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Thank you. Those that are willing and able, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so tonight is a work session. The point, the goal tonight is to go through the, like, full set of governance policies that we've developed over the last year, and talk about any issues, or ideas, or needs that we have in that read-through. I have a list of six items that I'd like to start with, and then we'll just kind of open it up to whoever would like. Hopefully, we can be a little less formal here, so don't worry about necessarily being recognized, simply because, again, we're just in work sessions, so jump in when you want. All of the items that I have are ones that are leftover. They're on, they're mostly on governance culture and the board superintendent relations, ones that we've looked at together in work session already. So, we're gonna start on page 25. That's the actual page number. It might be 26 if you're in the electronic document, but it's right here. The first thing that I wanted to bring up with everybody is the, we talked about this in P&amp;G, but we wanted to bring it to everybody, is the governance officer. That's something that you'll remember that Steve mentioned at our last work session with DeForest. As somebody on the board who is appointed to be sort of the, I don't know, taskmaster, this may be the, but someone who's appointed to make sure that the board stays on task during board meetings. And that might mean interrupting and saying that, you know, that's not really something that we address in our current governance, or if you wanted to really start using Steve's favorite word from DeForest, you could talk about wing-flapping, or something like that, just to keep, it's something to help keep. So, you can see the language that I've got there. Maybe I'll try to blow it up just a little bit, so it's easier to see on the share screen. Of course, I went through the remote thing. So, the first thing I just wanted to talk about is whether or not we think that we want someone to serve as a governance officer. The other officers' roles that are in there are the ones that we currently have, right? The president, vice president, treasurer, and clerk. So, I just added that language. Again, we talked about this in P&amp;G. It's the same as DeForest's language for that, I believe. And so, I wanted to just get some ideas about, shall we, should we have that as somebody? I think it was Dr. Johnson that said at P&amp;G, you know, it has to be somebody with a certain personality, because you have to be willing to step in and say, hey, we're off-track here, and we need to get back on. It would be something that would be in place, it would be voted on, it would be elected at our organizational meeting, just like the other roles. So, if you were nominated for that position, you could certainly say, no, I don't accept the nomination, just like you can for any of the officers. So, I'll try to stop talking now, and anybody can jump in with thoughts about whether we should include this in our draft or not.
Tim, did you see, this is something that other districts have done, that we've examined. Do you see it, do you see it prevalent, or not really, haven't really gauged whether it's prevalent or not?
I don't, I think, you know, we looked at basically five districts, their policies. I would, I want to say it's in two. I can't, out of the five, I can't be, you know, don't quote me on that. I'd have to go back and look, and I can, if it's really important. It was just something that Steve brought up, and I thought about, you know, part of our learning, you know, going forward, if we were to switch to this governance model, is how do we stay in what we're supposed to stay in? How do we stay focused on results? How do we stay focused on monitoring? And not go down these tangents where we're getting into operations or things that are not really the board's, you know, purpose, you know? And so, that at least made enough sense to me, that I thought, I'm gonna throw this in there. When we talked at P&amp;G, it at least made enough sense to say, let's see what the rest of the board thinks. I don't, we didn't have a straw poll or anything. It was just more, yeah, let's bring it to the rest of the board and see what they think.
Okay. Well, I'll finish, I'll finish my comment then. I just say, I mean, I think it's regardless of, I mean, I just wouldn't want to make sure it's not too out of the ordinary, but I guess it doesn't really matter if we agree on it. And I would say, I think a lot about these issues as sort of matters of protocol. That's a word that comes to my mind. I don't know if it's because of my computer science background, if it's quite the right word, but I do think of it as, you know, ways we conduct ourselves, and that's, I guess, a lot about what governance is about as well. So, I think things to help us ensure that we're operating the way that we intend to operate, so we can operate with that intentionality are good, and I think this is one of those things. So, it's, I like the idea.
I think the challenge, the challenge continues to be, though, I think, from a, from a dispositional perspective, I think that this particular role, though, also, it can't be construed by, you know, I think the president or vice president has, as we scroll down, in terms of the governance culture, this idea of, you know, because the way Steve, you potentially, you, in this role, you can disrupt a conversation, you can disrupt speech, you can disrupt actually a point of order of an individual. So, and then, you know, does that, in this role, do you also get somewhat, not necessarily targeted, but thought of as breaking decorum? And, you know, I really think, you know, the challenge becomes, you really, you know, the way Steve talked about it, is that person that will really just jump in, in the middle of someone talking, and are two individuals going back and forth, everyone, that's not what we're supposed to be doing, let's get back on task. Now, you know, yeah, I just, you know, I, optics of that, you know, that particular role, yeah, I, yeah, I just don't know. You know, I would, I would revel as a governance officer. I think I, that would be, that would be really, really cool for me to do, given the fact that I think I need one of those in my own house, a governance officer, especially with my, my middle schooler here. But, yeah, I, I, for me, and I was, you're right, Dr. Nordine, I was the one that really, I think, disposition, like, is everyone comfortable, comfortable with doing that? And at what particular point in time in a, in a debate and discussion is that interjection appropriate, right? And, you know, I, when I hear Steve, that there's this, you know, this person, that member, who, but I also know for them, when he was talking about, some of their members have been on boards for, you know, multiple years. I guess, for me, I would also caution, if we do do, if we go down this route, is that there has to be some contingencies on there, because just say, given the transition of board members, a new board member can't be expected then to just jump in as a governance officer. I, I, I would, I would hope that, you know, the nomination of that position would also take some of those things into consideration. Thank you.
I agree with Dr. Johnson on that. I think the, my concern with it, I mean, not, I really, it's not really a concern, but question about it was really just the knowledge base necessary to probably, you know, be able to know those policies inside and out, and to be able to really hold board members accountable. It seems daunting with the amount of new folks that we have right now. So, yeah, my concern would just be, going forward, is it something, I mean, with a, with a district that has a long history of having members on for 20 years, 12 to 20 years is like average, you know, this is probably an easier position to fill, but there doesn't seem to be that, you know, in our district, we seem to turn over board members a little quicker. So, that would be my only concern, is just the, kind of the knowledge base and the, I don't know, I don't want to call it respect, but definitely, you have, you have to have sort of an air, and you have to command, you know, the board members in such a way that they respect your opinion about what those policies say.
I wouldn't necessarily envision this person as being like Judge Dredd, or something where they are the law, you know, that they would, they would, and I would, I would also anticipate that they would act with a little bit of, you know, insights, and, you know, they wouldn't just, every single time, immediately shout down somebody. They might wait for them to finish their sentence, and jump in and say, you know, President, then this, right now, as of right now, President Nordine, you know, I, I think we're getting a little off-task here, and I, I would just, you know, and then you could even, so I don't anticipate it being a, you know, and of course, that's dispositional as well. But I, I think the question is, would this be somebody that's, even if, even if this person is gonna have to learn along with all of us, you know, as this goes on, is this something that might be helpful in that development of getting used to it? And then, you know, once, once we're, we're into it, and presumably, you know, there will, sometimes there will be newer members, and sometimes there will be more senior members, and we don't control that. But the question, I guess, for, for me, is, is this gonna be somebody that, a role that will be helpful for the board as a whole?
Just to take back to my first comment, I guess I, and given what Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Zer said, I, you know, I hadn't thought too hard about exactly the rules and the way that this person would, under which this person would operate. But I would hope it would be more about redirecting conversation that's kind of off the track to a correct track, redirecting it to a later track, and helping to redirect that conversation to the right place, so that it's, rather than buried, that it's elevated to an appropriate point, you know, point. We might hope that we would structure it that way. So, it would be less of a confrontational thing, and more of a helping to move us ahead. And hopefully, that too would be defined, as to what it means to want to move ahead. Would be less, hopefully, less about years and years and years of experience, and more about understanding the policy as written, and what, what we're trying to achieve with it. And, and I would think we would get into some specifics about, you know, examples of things. So, it wouldn't be too much up to interpretation. But, yeah, I think the devil's in the details there, for sure.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, oh, I think it was just interesting, you know, what Commissioner Harder just said. I, because I guess, the way I interpreted Commissioner Harder from comments that the gentleman from DeForest made to us, there are actually, at times, the conversation's not elevated, because you've gone too, too much into the weeds, and it does end the conversation. So, it, it's an interesting take, that I, I, I guess I would not actually see it as commissioner, but I, I see his piece of where you redirect the conversation. But it was my interpretation, listening to Steve, there's, there's some times that actually there's no redirection, because you're so far into the weeds that you just need to actually just move beyond that. And so, that's, that's an interest, that's an interesting take. Thank you.
I got the impression when I was listening to Steve, that there's times when the board would have after-action reports following the meeting, where they would kind of discern some of the issues that they talked about, and whether or not it was going into the weeds, or whether it was something that was related to policy. And I could see a meeting where one person's going into the weeds might be another person's policy interpretation. And I don't think we want to get into a situation where we're having a board discussion where the argument is whether or not we should be having the argument.
I think we all probably agree with that. I think that it's going to happen, however, in a learning process, and changing governance, and focusing on new objectives, that we're going to have, that we're gonna have that time where we, you know, where some, where we're in disagreement about, and I think, haven't, you know. So, yes, I hope that that happens very infrequently, but I'm sure it will happen, because there, I think for each of us, there is a, at least I can identify for me, you know, like, an issue that might be, like, just pique me, that I really isn't a board issue, but that I'm just passionate about as a person, and that I would have a tendency to go off the rails on. And I suspect that each of us has some of those things. I mean, we don't, you don't run for this office because you have complete ambivalence about all things educational, you know? So, yeah, I hope that it, so I guess, in the interest of just moving things along, should we, should we leave this in the draft, and have this be a role that we, that we start out with? Or should we remove it, and see if we can get along without it?
Can I offer a third suggestion?
Yes.
That, that role, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Lori, but that maybe we assign the role of the governance czar to the vice president, the board vice president. And so, it stays with that position, and whoever ends up in the position as vice president, then as a part of that role, takes on the responsibility of governance.
I had thought about that too, but I actually wondered if it might go better with something like clerk? Then you wouldn't get the sort of ripple effect, like, the president's not there, so the vice president has to facilitate, then who's gonna do it? Or if the vice president is facilitating the board's self-evaluation, then they're kind of tied up in that.
I like that, too.
I have not served, I have not served as the, sorry, Lori, go ahead.
I just, I can't, I don't remember a time when the clerk had an active role during a meeting.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Previously, I was tasked with keeping minutes during closed session. And we decided that having a staff person do it was a better idea, which I agree. So, at this point, all I, all that I know that I do is sign documents, and review them, and sign them. So, at least in my eight months or so in this role, that is pretty much all that I'm aware of, that I have to do.
So, are we more or less satisfied with unfolding that language into the clerk? I don't, sorry, Dr. Bika, I called you Lori here, and we're in an open meeting, so I was trying to be more formal, please forgive me. Commissioner Clements, would you say that the role of clerk is dispositional in any way? You know, we had talked about it, it has to be a certain, you have to have a certain willingness to nose in when necessary. I don't think that's the case, in my impression, with the clerk, so I don't see an issue in that way of adding it to the clerk's responsibilities.
Agree. Sorry about that. I agree.
So, I think that's...
Dr. Nordine, could we, as you're changing this and switching this over, could you just, I hate it, I don't like being this person. Typically, I'm not this person, because I'm the one getting criticized. But could we just do the, is that ensure, that's E-N instead of I-N, correct?
I believe that you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, my apologies, but...
No, I appreciate that. I mean, and certainly, like, if that comes up. So, I'm just gonna leave things in comment. I also created an archival copy, so anything that changed here, the actual copy, there's actually a stored copy of exactly what was here tonight. So, if we need to go back and see what was there, that's there. Okay, we'll try to move down here. The next thing is right in this little gap here. This is on board committees, and I am going to put Commissioner Harder on the spot, because this is where the discussion about budget development is gonna go. P&amp;G has kind of decided that we can go without P&amp;G in its format. And I did take out language on a, like, governance committee, being like somebody that would be in charge of reviewing the policy and doing the calendar. That could all be kind of board work, or, but I had asked Budget Development to have some discussion about what they saw as the role. And Commissioner Harder, you gave me just a little heads-up, but if you'd like to share, and then we can still talk as a group about what, what to do there.
Yeah, that's, we talked, we did talk in the last budget development meeting. Actually, we've talked in a couple of meetings now on this topic. We've reserved a little time, and we talked quite extensively in the last meeting about the question of the role of the BDC in a coherent governance world. And the three board members, Commissioner Bika, Commissioner Lyons, and I agreed and made a, and made a motion on a formal recommendation to keep the Budget Development Committee, at least for this period of this April to next April, in a, what I would call a transitional form, with the intention of carrying through the pieces that need to be, that we judge is needing to be attended to by BDC, but looking as critically as we can at each item, as to, you know, how we can release that work from BDC-specific work, either directly to the executive team, or to the full board, or both in some form. And so, that BDC is not any kind of intermediary, wherever, wherever we think it's possible and prudent to do so. And so, I, part of the reason we came to that conclusion, well, from my point, I know, you know, in a previous meeting, Ms. Johnson, our executive director of business, had, had expressed that there was some value in being able to, to talk a little more deeply about some of these items with a smaller group, in a somewhat less, slightly less formal setting than, than a full Monday business meeting. And I think that, I certainly had expressed this, and I think Commissioner Lyons had it well, had it, had as well, of the idea of being able to go a little more deeply, and be a little, a little less cautious where you step in that kind of a setting, is helpful to being able to, you know, sort of dig in deeply to questions. You know, from a counterpoint, we said, there's certainly a lot of value in going into that depth. And if it's valuable for, for we three on budget, perhaps it's also valuable for everybody on the board. And so, that's, that's kind of a counterpoint to, to the, to the question. I think where we, where we landed, from my perspective anyway, is that, you know, given that we as a board have opted to retain a hand on compensation questions, and, and some of those other budgetary issues, that, and that this is how we've always functioned, that we thought it was prudent to continue to convene the committee, but with an explicit charge of, you know, sort of trying to evolve as aggressively as possible towards ending that committee over the course of this year.
So, before I ask the, for others, you know, when you sent me that, that update, I started to think about how might, if this were the direction that we were going, how might we phrase that? And my suggestion would be simply to list Budget Development here as, and basically, you know, as the one type, that there's only a couple of places where it would do this, but Budget Development, you know, would continue, like, basically would say, we'll operate according to district policy, and we can, we can actually reference the number if we think we need to, and will be revisited on April, whatever this, that second meeting is, 2022, with the goal of reconsidering whether it needs to continue. And we could just leave it as that sentence, because we have the guiding principles. And it sounds like the work that is gonna be done over the next year. I would also imagine there's gonna be a lot of referendum work to be done over the next year, should we continue on that path as well. But that would be my suggestion for how to, how to fit it in, if that's the direction we want to go. But I would love to hear from commissioners that do not serve on budget development. I'm sort of agnostic either direction. I think I understand both ways. And of course, Dr. Bika or Commissioner Lyons, if there's things that you'd like to add about it, please do.
I agree with everything that you both said.
I can, I think Aaron was very eloquent in summarizing the committee's thoughts. It's just, personally, the Budget Development Committee is a bit of a security blanket for me. I understand wanting to move away from it, but I like that discernment of the, of the issues in a little bit more detail. I also recognize that there is a value in having the budget development shared with the entire board, and so that there is a value in having that decision-making by all board members, as opposed to doing something in committee. I do think that there are some in-the-weeds kind of work that accompanies budget development. And I've used this example a couple of times. I was in a board meeting, prior to me being on the, the school board, in the gallery where one of the board members was, was editing and rewriting parts of a contract. So, when the district is negotiating a contract, or working on language within a contract, it's really something that you don't want to do in a full board meeting. It just, there are things that, in a full board meeting, I wouldn't say as opposed to things in a, in a, in a committee meeting, just because the full board meeting has a much wider and broader scope of communication, where when you're doing the editing of a contract, when I was sitting in the, in the, in the gallery, I thought, this is really, this is committee work. And so, that's where, that's where I'm at. Over the course of the year, I think that we can kind of start to move some of those tasks into the full board meeting, and explore how we can do some of the more detail work that accompanies budget development. And I think it'll work fine. You know, I was, it was my main question to DeForest that I wanted to hear them talk about. And so, you know, those were the thoughts that I had when we, when we were talking.
Yeah, just a quick point on that, too, is a, in terms of the full board versus the committee, in my recollection, we, I don't think, I can't think of anything the board has really acted on of any consequence that hasn't gone to the full board first for approval. And I think, you know, some things are, I, I don't even recall any real question about that. I think we pretty much, at every turn, in my recollection of anything consequence, it kind of automatically becomes, okay, when, when do we bring this to the full board for consideration? And I see that this as a working group, whose job it is to help process and, and make sense of complicated issues, and hopefully, do a good job of that, and providing a full and expansive view of that issue, if we're doing our job well. That's how I've certainly approached the work, and I would, would continue throughout this year, too. If I'm, if I'm on the committee this year, I would, I would continue to push for that myself.
All right, not seeing anybody else jump in, I'll add that language to the draft, and we'll target that as a transition. Next up is, just moving down another page, something that Dr. Johnson had brought up in Policy and Governance. And it's under the Board Member's Code of Conduct. It was something that we wanted to bring, just to get everybody's ideas on. And Dr. Johnson, I'm about to turn it over to you, to talk about what your thoughts were here. It was the two items there, under, need to go up just a little bit to remember what the... Yeah, so, board members will, kind of, again, this is all board members' code of conduct, but criticize privately, praise publicly, and publicly support final actions of the board. Dr. Johnson, if you'd like to explain, you know, kind of what your thoughts were that caused you to bring this up, and then we'll see what we want to do with them. I believe part of it was redundancy, but I think you're about ready.
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, so, for me, it was just kind of the idea, we already addressed that once a decision is made by the board, it is made. And so, I, for me, I'm just not sure that this particular wording... needs to needs to be in here, you know, I and I think most most board members would or would hopefully agree after a decision made is kind of over. And so for me, it was looking at you know, I think it's essentially the same thing, although the inclusion of both of those. And so and it's not really, I guess, the idea of criticizing privately and then praising publicly. I think our our part of our roles are to question question policies and our issues that come come before us. A tip to get answers to those particular questions based on the information from from those questions, we we make a decision and then whatever decision is made by the majority, that's the decision. And so for me, I I I guess mine, I had to go back and actually find my notes, but I think these are essentially the same. And, you know, they're almost not needed, given the fact that it's also somewhere else prior to that, you know, we will go, we go along with the decision that's made with the board as a whole.
I will just say that I know that I have not always done well at the criticize privately, praise publicly. Part of my role as a board member. And so for me, that one especially is something that might be nice to have for someone like me who that's something that I have missed before and something to hold myself and perhaps others might be able to hold me accountable to that. But I'm also open to that. And then I agree that we as in general, I think we all share the understanding of publicly, you know, support final actions of the board. I know many of us have had issues on which we were dissenting votes and were outvoted. And then we say, that's okay, that, you know, that's the process. And, you know, it's 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 been decided by the board and we move forward. So I don't think that that's a problem. But again, it's just one of those things that perhaps we can so that those that was kind of the discussion that we had at P and G and we wanted to just see what the disposition of the rest of you.
Could I ask just how in P and G were you viewing these? Maybe some of you were viewing it differently, but to me, these look really like, I know it's policy, but these really are essentially guidelines. This entire section three here of you know, how, you know, sort of an ideal of how we'd hope you'll act and how, you know, there's an expectation that you'll act this way. But my question is, what what if the board member doesn't? You know, I mean, I don't know, is there some description of what are consequences or?
I would refer you to GC nine process for addressing board member violations. Where there is a process kind of up, it's, you know, there's only so much teeth that the board has, but it, you know, up through public censure of a of a member, but it there's a four like it's like a four step process that starts with just having a private discussion, then bringing in the officers, then, you know, bringing in the full board, then publicly you know, saying so that that is any of these violations. You know, again, the first step is usually please bring it up with the member or inform the president and they will bring it up with the member if you don't feel, you know, comfortable about it.
It seems reasonable to me. I mean, that we have some expectations and that we have some way of of sort of giving them some teeth. As you say, it is limited. I think I think censure is probably where it's about as high as it goes, I would guess, based on what I understand.
Yes, I think that's the case, at least from what we can do as a board. Certainly, the public could recall or something.
I guess I'm not bothered by the redundancy, I suppose, including it here. And I think about past board evaluations, the self evaluations where we've looked at themes. And one of the recurring themes is the boards speaking with one voice. So I think these even just even if it is repeated again, it both of these do speak to that theme, which has, you know, emerged more than once in the past. So I would keep them in.
Because I guess if I could jump back in, I guess for me, the other thing that was bothersome, I looked at my notes. I the these exact statements, though, how are they different from if we go back up to governance culture two, four? That talks about actually the dispositions and expectations of 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 kind of what we're supposed to do. So you go that two, four, especially like like be and all this kind of stuff, you know, and practice professional medium decorum. Oh, those issues, it's a decorum piece. And for me, that I, I said, is it will it in if we leave it in there? No, but I I I think that 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 idea that there's this continuous continuous reminder when it's already been spelled out multiple times. And and I get it, you know, I think we we have seen in neighboring neighboring districts and school board meetings where things have taken a taken, you know, a turn for the worse as it pertains to decorum. However, you know, we have it in, you know, two, four, going through. Then we bring it back down here again. And then that, you know, that the consequences piece in nine, like I said, I either way, I guess for me, I'm just I the repetitiveness, you know, especially if the underlying the underlying one of the underlying purposes of going to a governance governance culture model is efficiency, redundancy is not efficiency. And so that's kind of really for me, kind of where where I see it. Thank you.
So Commissioners Zer, Lyons or Clements, is there anything that you'd like to add? I think we're, I mean, I think the probably the the best way to go here is just sort of a straw poll and you know, sort of see where where folks, where the board kind of lies. I think both both Dr. Johnson and Commissioners Commissioner Harder, Dr. Beekah have made good points.
I don't really have a strong feeling on this. Go either way.
I agree with that. I think I can see both sides of it pretty clearly.
I'm happy with it in either way.
I'm gonna so hearing that, I guess I'm going to leave it in there for now. It can definitely be something that we can continue to you know, we can amend our policy at any time, but it sounds like there's more people on the side of leave it than not, I guess.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Marquell, I don't know how you were thinking about like from the those decorum standards. I guess I might think about these as what people do outside of meetings. Because people, you know, boards can get into, you know, just as much difficulty. You know, during, but also outside of, I guess I kind of thought of these as spanning everything, every moment, every interaction.
That's what I was going to say, Lori. I think that they're nice to have. I'd rather have them than have us get into a situation where, you know, someone has stepped over the bounds or over the line and then we don't really have a strong thing to reference them back to. And we can always take them out if we find them ridiculous later, but I think having them is fine for now.
Yeah, that's it. That's an interesting take, I guess, for me, I just in my short period of time of being on the board, I guess I have not I guess I don't envision where 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 I myself would put, I guess, put myself in that compromise compromising compromising position. And yeah, I guess I also, I'm not sure that my my board member, a board member hat's not always on unless it's actually specifically talking about school district policy. So I guess I I could see your point, Dr. Beekah. But I guess for me, it's not even, it's not that extensive. So, you know, once a decision is made, it's made. And it's kind of, it's it's almost a moot point unless the decision is still open for discussion. But once once a decision is made, a decision, decision is made, you know, I think, you know, for those of us who have who receive emails from our public sentiment and comments from from the public, obviously, they would like more after certain decisions are made and, you know, whether or not we choose to engage in those particular conversations or not with with the public to a certain degree, but the decision doesn't change. And I guess for me, that's kind of where where I see it. But I it's 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 fine either way. But I think as we continue to go through the document, though, I when I think about efficiency, redundancy just doesn't come along with that. And I I think there's other parts of this where there's there's some some level of redundancy, but that's fine. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next thing that I've got here. And this is going to go to Dr. Beekah. This is in BSR four, that's page thirty five of the document. You know, we're the only ones in this particular meeting. I hope if y'all don't mind if I just start using first names because it feels onerous for me to throw that on there, but I if it doesn't, I'm willing to go back. But anyway, Lori had suggested several edits and I think the theme was basically around the discussion that we had had at the previous time that we had gone through the the board superintendent relations as a whole group around reasonable. And so Lori, I don't, I tried to preserve these. I realize it's not as clean for you for all of us to read them. It didn't transfer well when I kind of copied and pasted them. This was the cludge that I came up with. So it's it's four and five. There are several rewrites. I think it's what we need probably is a discussion on how we feel about the use of reasonable there. And if it is reasonable, then we can probably sort of adopt most of most or all of Lori's suggested rewrites. And if we feel like the reasonable part needs to stay in there, then we probably don't. So Lori, I'll turn it over to you to talk about what your thoughts have been since we've had that meeting and then we can discuss it as a group.
Tim, can you tell me when the version of the document where there was a lot of many comments in the margin there about this reasonable? Is that something that have other people seen that? Have you talked about that? Or I just wanted to know where?
We have not talked about it. It is open for anybody to look at at any time, but my guess is that most people have not gone back to it, although if you have, then and it's it's still up. I could actually, I can bring it up now if you would like. But my guess is that probably most people did not go back and review it again until reading here.
Yeah, I don't think you have to go back to that version. I was just getting a sense of what people may have already talked about.
Sure.
So you want me to speak about the reasonable, the reasonable interpretation? I think after I had given it more thought, I I really found that I was against the idea of the statements about, you know, a reasonable person or reasonable interpretation, any of that language, that it it sets forth a criterion for the superintendent that that can't actually be mapped to anything. And I think a board that ultimately dislike the thought of maybe losing oversight or letting go, that maybe that might have been perhaps the origin of it. It's the language, it's language that tries to sound like it's not micromanagement. But I think it is. So I remember earlier I put in a comment, you know, something like, we won't say it directly, but we believe you can't do your job with our without our help superintendent. So I know I would never say these words to an administrator that I trusted. That is, if if I decide your interpretation is reasonable, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't say that or think that. And as I remember, DeForest said, if you don't trust your superintendent, then fire him.
So there are two reasons why those changes weren't weren't made. The first is we had already talked about it as a board and then and talked, we had a lot of discussion about reasonable and how to define that. And then Lori had gone through and had some rewrite. So of course, I didn't want to change it without bringing it back since we had already seen it. The other thing that I find myself caught on is that it having that discussion of reasonable in there puts I think I think actually helps the board have its its guardrails up because there will be an interpretation that Mike will make that one of us will not like, we will not like, that's not how I would approach that particular thing. That is not, you know, I would rather have a different program for developing character or social justice issues or I would not like, I don't like the policy, the way that they changed this policy related to equity. I don't think it goes far enough. And it to my mind, having the discussion of reasonable in there might let the board reinforce the board that it is, a lot of these are not about, this is exactly how we want it. It is about these are the guidelines that we have set and is if you are within those guidelines, then we're going to accept it, even if it's not our preferred method. And I so I feel like maybe it puts bounds on the board in a positive way. I'm not 100% sold on it, but that's that's sort of my thought is that it keeps the board from from throwing up a roadblock every time the superintendent does something that a particular member doesn't particularly like. Or, you know, or but but it's still well within the bounds of making progress to reach the results.
Does the interpretation of whether some aspect is reasonable or not, is a is a board, a full board determination ultimately, is it not? And so
Yes.
You know, this problem of one member kind of going off the handle is less of an issue in that context. And also I think it's valuable for a board to have this, it's I guess it's a sort of a veto power to what is otherwise a huge amount of power for the superintendent. You know, I don't know where, if we don't have something like this reasonable in there, I don't, I don't know. Maybe we shouldn't, you know, maybe we shouldn't have a any kind of lever in there. But it feels like if all seven agree, or even if a majority agree that that something is unreasonable, it's it's probably worth reviewing if, you know, that measure is correct. Again, though, it's also tempered, I feel, by time, you know, we've even if, you know, if it was set a year ago as the as the target and now a year later, some different board says, well, that's not reasonable. Well, fine, but you still have to judge it by the target that was set a year ago because that's what we've been working towards. Now you can adjust that target. But, you know, I don't know, it seems to me that it would unfold well potentially. So I guess it doesn't alarm me to see reasonable in there too much, but I I sure it's made me think about it more than I have before. The the point is a good one.
I think it really, I think it really opens up the the possibility that the superintendent will do more communicating with the board, which which is, you know, I have appreciated that from Mike, I've appreciated the phone calls and, you know, even though I'm just saying, I trust you, Mike, maybe, you know, that's that's what you say, right? It the superintendent, it's going to be bouncing more off of the board because, you know, I always try to give real world examples around stuff like this. And let's just say, and I won't even use Mike in this, but let's say we had a superintendent who would have come to us last fall and said, we're opening schools five days a week. Don't, you know, we're it just gung ho, go in there. And we all said, that's not that we know, that's not safe, you know, or whatever, like we would have had a moment to say no, but in an ideal world, the superintendent would never make that choice, would never come to the board with that recommendation because they would know that we would deem it unreasonable. And they would know that because they would have had conversations with us. And so I feel like I feel like it it keeps the superintendent in better communication with the board and it keeps us more I don't want to say in the loop from like with a finger on the scale sort of way, but just more that we're a team. So I don't know. And that that and I've never seen policy governance without the reasonable interpretation. I've never seen any sort of governance model without this reasonable thing. So I'm curious to know if we have any examples where they have different language.
Well, I guess my my rewrite would be an example. So if you're looking at
I mean, other districts that have have taken reasonable out, other that have using policy governance that are not using the reasonable interpretation language.
I can't speak to other districts. I rewrote it to in a form that doesn't require the reasonable interpretation. So I guess if I offer a wording alternative and I suppose you could see what what you think that captures.
I would note, like even in the first one here on number three, it's not like the word reasonable. I would note, like even in the first one here on number three, it's not like the word reasonable doesn't exist, right? You know, assuming these the at these added policies and decisions reasonably accord with stated board policies. You know, so it's at least in that one, it's not, you know, fully disappearing. It's it's more the discussion of the reasonable person standard. And whether that guardrail is needed, you know, I this hinges, the the work hinges a lot on the board accepting. Reasonable interpretations and reasonable progress. And so the question is, you know.
We're looking at three versus four, right? Three is the is Commissioner. Yeah, and.
Yeah, three would replace, could replace, Lori's suggestion is that three replace four and there are there are several more, but they all sort of hinge on the same idea. I think I I might have misunderstood them, Lori, but that was my read was that that's kind of what what all of these were targeted around.
Yeah, that's right.
I like Lori's rewrite. I like reasonable. I think when it's not reasonable, it will be obvious.
Yeah, I I like three compared to four.
Alright, and I'm gonna drop down. Uh Erica, to answer your question, I don't think that any of the. I don't think that any of the districts that we looked at did not have uh reasonable as part of their. The that reasonable language, I think they were all basically like that. The the board superintendent relations were pretty standard. Across the five, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So again, I I you'd have to go back, but my recollection is that there was. That's why this got done sort of just by me as a draft and I took it to P and G. For the original review because it was something that didn't require a lot of group writing because it was so similar. So this would, this would make it, you know, more uh unique to us. Uh so it would be six versus seven here. But I think this one is less um. This one I I think is less less, I mean, it can go either way with whatever language. The main one is about uh reasonable idea. So I've heard a couple of people say that they like uh like the way that Lori's got it framed.
I'm gonna, because I don't know everyone like as well as I know some of you that I have written with like so much in the past. Uh I don't, uh I never, um you can say anything about anything I write, it never hurts my feelings. And I'm always open to change, so don't feel bad about that.
The same goes for me on stuff like this, that, yeah.
Well, I'll just, I'll chime in uh. Uh my last uh the reviewer for my last uh said that everything that I wrote was horrible, so uh Lori, this is all uh horrible, so I I. As I was talking to editor, I'm not sure how I was, I respond to that uh uh criticism from reviewer one. Um you know, I I for for me, you know, I. I I I'm I'm really not a fan of uh of the the utilization of a a reasonable. Uh I, you know, I I I, you know, I I I thought it was, I think it was pretty crafty, kind of the way that uh. Uh Lori tried to uh, you know, either operationalize it or make it a little bit more uh. Tangential to the to 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 the process, you know, I I, cause I I I guess for me, and I think it was a. Fisher Harder's comment, I I I guess for me, it it really, if. If the majority actually deemed something uh unre- uh unreasonable. Then actually it does change right away. And so I think we, you know, it's kind of, that that's that's really, that's really that 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 challenge. But if, you know, uh uh our our current superintendent and, you know, I. Uh I think some of those of you that I've talked to, you kind of know for me, a a a trigger word is actually trust. And that's really my whole difficulty with the coherence governance model all uh. All together, it's, you know, whether or not individuals do their job or not. And so I think if the the lines are of of communication are 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 open and. Uh we've seen artifacts that were brought forth by a superintendent that they've already using as it relates to the decision making. That's where that idea of uh us deeming something reasonable or not, like will come into uh come into play. But at at any point in time, if there's a a majority of 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 board members that deemed something unreasonable. That quote unquote power or authority that 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 that's stated here no longer exists.
So Mark, what do you want to sum that up and say which which version it is that you favor?
I I I I'm I'm really uh li- listening to everyone, like for me, I'm. I would like actually not, like I wouldn't be against like having reasonable in there, but I think uh uh. Uh Dr. Bika's attempt at uh added i- is fine, so I probably would uh uh lean more in that particular direction.
Alright, so I'll go ahead and clean up those things uh based around that discussion. And then we can keep moving, because I know that I'm sure that several of you have things. I have two small things left, or hopefully they're small. Uh the first is OE two, uh and if you read through online, you might have seen my comment about it. Uh the last thing is that superintendent may not uh adopt policies, practices or procedures that create or maintain inequity. Or demonstrably lessen equity for historically marginalized groups within the district. And I wondered if that. Uh for historically marginalized groups, uh this was, you know, why we worked on this together and maybe it's okay, but I wondered if we should just remove that because we don't want. Equity lessened for anybody and by definition, you can't lessen equity for privileged uh populations. Um but I'm open to leaving it in there, so I was just hoping for a quick, you know, up, you know, like how do we feel? And then we can move on to the last one.
It does seem, yeah, like maybe it's redundant, I don't know, or or but I guess I I. Your your description of why it would be considered for excision certainly makes sense to me. Um Tim, but I um, so yeah, I I'd be open to to cutting it unless there's a, you know, maybe there's a good reason why we shouldn't.
It 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 just continues to play for me in in terms of some of the redundancy. We we we've made points multiple times in this document about. Everything will be viewed through an equity lens. So, you know, once again, I think, you know, uh you know, it's somewhat uh of a redundant uh. Like like that redundancy piece, so if it's rebooted, it's fine.
I I will say, at least on the equity bits, uh the redundancy was an intentional choice that. That Lori and Phil and I made uh because we we wanted that to be redundant throughout the document. Uh to really make sure that to to keep the focus on that, but I I can understand. So I'll I'll just take it out. Is that okay with everybody? Just those, just those few words there.
As I'm reading it, Tim, I I'm wondering about um. Eliminating adopt policies, practices or procedures. So. If the sentence just read, the superintendent may not create or maintain systems of inequity. Or demonstrably lessen systems of inequity within the district. Then it wouldn't parse it out for just policies, practices or procedures. Just a suggestion.
I I don't, I yeah, I guess that to me it's one or the other. Anybody else want to weigh in?
The the thought is to to truncate the sentence further to just be, the superintendent may not create or maintain inequity or demonstr- demonstrably lessen equity. Within the district, which I think is fine. I I don't know about adopt, I guess now they look at it, adopting policies, I don't, the superintendent doesn't. Adopt policies as far as I know, maybe.
Uh actually, all all of the policies that were that are currently, the policies that we like work on in P and G, all of our numbered policies become the districts to maintain. And the board uh like hears about, you know, in monitoring about changes to those policies. But as we looked at in that, like Lori's rewrite, superintendent has the ability to create the policy under that. Under that thing. So that that is in fact what they, the whole, that whole body will become theirs to deal with. And aside from reporting back in monitoring and allowing us to decide, you know, are these reasonable interpretations or reasonable accomplishments? Uh they, that that body is there for. For them to work with.
Okay, then it's fine. I mean, spelling it out or not, I think the 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 mechanisms to create or maintain versus we spell out the mechanisms or not, I I think. I I don't feel strongly about.
It's fine. I um I looked at those three things as kind of very narrowing it. In creating systems of inequity and taking out specifically policies, procedures and practices. I think broadens it, but um it's fine either way. It's. Kind of probably nitpicking.
So I wonder if, uh I know we, Tim, Phil and I, I mean, really struggled on these to not have the superintendent may not. So with the changes you're talking about with with this now seven, do you think it has, it would be captured? Now under, I guess it's. Five? Are are, in other words, are we really adding anything by having the superintendent may not?
I still feel like that's the most powerful statement in here, you know, whether it's, I and and I think it's more powerful if we just started with creates. Because that is a, that is a hard hammer as opposed to saying, oh, we're doing these things. That you can't create inequity or do those things that do those things is is a hard line in the sand. Is and that's different than, you know, may or must do like number five.
Uh I I like may not create or maintain inequity. Personally, I I I don't have a problem with it. I think it's it's clear, it's concise and. Feels feels right to me.
I'm not sure what if we talked about this at any point, but what do you uh and I like the idea of what you're saying. It's kind of like that really is just. What if you put it before, this is, you know, put it before superintendent will, have that drop and be the first thing. And then you go into, so then it seems you've really elevated it there rather than having it follow the rest.
Uh that works just fine for me. Although I don't know why my computer will not let me. Alright, I'll put a note on that then. Okay. Uh the very last thing, and I think this is the easiest one because it gets right at what Mark Wall has been saying about redundancy. I think this is part of, this is an artifact of us. Um putting things together kind of one at a time piecemeal. Uh I believe that this uh prepare and publish on behalf of the board in OE eight. Uh is completely redundant and actually uses almost the exact same language as uh prepare and publish in treatment of the community. Uh which is right there. So I'd like to remove the one, if you feel it is better to have the publishing of the annual report. On uh communication as opposed to treatment of the community. Then I can just move the this one, uh the one in treatment is more thorough. So I can just move that one down. Any problems with me removing the one? And do you want me to move? This one down into communication or is it fine to stay in treatment? Alright, then I'm just gonna delete the one that is down below that is smaller and uh redundant. And it remains uh the same. Alright, uh that closes off the six things that I had that were outstanding to come in here. We've got just under an hour left. Uh I'll just open it to anybody that wants to jump in with something that they'd like to talk about. You know, I. Individual word language maybe not the most productive if if there are broader things, but certainly we can do that too if that's. What we need. Oh, we will have uh time, of course, at the next meeting uh for more discussion if need be. That will be uh on Monday. That will be our. Quote unquote first read. Uh those uh Erica and Lori were in agenda setting. We had some question about whether we actually need to. Uh read this aloud, uh because it's thirty nine pages at this point. Uh we reached out, well, we. May have reached out to W A S B and Steve Weld to get opinions of both the W A S B. Who said, you know, we don't give legal advice, but here's our idea and Steve Weld, who does give legal advice. Uh both expressed surprise that we still read policies aloud at all. Uh and so there will be an item on the agenda on Monday that is going to be a temporary suspension of that policy. So that we don't have to read these aloud. We will publish it and I'll make sure I mention uh for people that are watching at night that where they can get it and read it. So we won't read them aloud. We will have time, right now we have, I think, about forty five minutes budgeted for more discussion if we need it at that point. But we will have some more discussion time uh on that Monday for our first read as well. So anyway, uh go ahead and jump in if there's something. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. So I've been. Focused in part on the role of the district. Um on community development broadly, including communication. And um I I generally like where the operational policies are with in that regard. Um they they do to me seem to be a little bit more outward focused than than. Um kind of being part of. The community development ecosystem. Um I haven't really considered how. Any of these would be reframed, however. But I think I'm I'm generally satisfied with the way that they're written. Um and also the. The uh climate to OE three. Uh the only thing that caused me pause was. Uh that the superintendent shall, paging up to it. Uh within six months of adoption of this policy, shall release a draft plan. Uh that's that's pretty ambitious if if they haven't started. A planning process already. So wi- without knowing what their what their current. Status of is, um I just don't want to be, I don't want them to be set up for. Um not achieving that goal. Just because the the the. Kind of portfolio of buildings that the district operates and all the purchasing and transportation footprint and things like that. Can be, they can be a challenging. Challenging to giving, get get a hold of current. Current impact, much less create a plan around a future goal, you know, in in six months. But again, I don't know if the district is already tracking and. Is is starting from a s- a strong position or not on this matter since that. That uh resolution was adopted, I think, about eighteen months ago. Um. And and I assume everything's kind of gotten turned upside down because the way we're operating our facilities has have changed. Uh in the past several months, as we all know, so. I guess caution to get a little more information on that.
I think the district is in a strong position. And I think there's a long history that this kind of work uh really happens a lot, so much kind of behind the scenes. And never, you know, sees the light of a board meeting. So I think we were really, I think we were really trying to give this. The urgency that it deserves. I know I don't have to tell you that, Josh. Um so I I thought we really wanted to challenge the district to um to make um. Uh really to to be active here and I think there's a really, there's already the foundation is there.
I've uh, well, I've thought a lot about this engaging the community question because uh in fact. In uh our discussions in budget, I've I sort of, it had me thinking. About what kinds of issues I'm frequently most concerned about and as. I don't know if it's good or bad or what it means, but as I've spent more and more time on the board. Increasingly, my questions are are more about, one, what is our superintendent and executive team think? Two. How will our 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 family? how will our 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 families and our staff receive it? And three, how will the wider community of everybody else in the in the district receive it? And um typically kind of in that order, honestly, but um for better for worse again, but I'm left with these questions of communication. And when questions come in from staff, questions come in from families, question coming from some random taxpayer. Um I it would be nice if there were, there's always a hot topic or or three of of the day, and it would be nice if we had a process and a mechanism in the district that I to to my mind would be based in the administration where we can say, hey, these are some great questions. We've passed it on, but know that, you know, obviously anybody can do that today and and pass it on to the superintendent. But to know that there's a process backing it up, and I I think a lot about these FAQs as you know, as we get these topics that we can usually anticipate what's going to be push, you know, hot hot button issues. To get these FAQs and to try to be somewhat comprehensive in answering questions and to have a bit more of a this one voice idea of how to answer the questions. So, you know, I I bring this up now. I don't, I mean, it's it's maybe a little too granular for a a policy document like this, but it has been on my mind a lot lately and and since we're talking about it, I I I just felt I could say it now.
I'll just note that um within the operational expectations, for those of you that weren't on the drafting group for this, uh all of of the fourteen of them. Uh only two of them are brand new and unique to E C A S D. Uh that is the equity commitment and the climate commitment. We drafted those and put them in specifically because of the priorities of this district. Those are the ones that are not found. In other districts, all of the rest of them have analogs, have borrowed language, have versions in every other district. So uh when we're talking about our climate commitment, this this really is something that we, you know, talked about. Uh Lori, I think, was the original drafter of the the climate commitment and had that six months in there. And so as we talk about that, the, you know, the communication and and how to put the 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 priority forward on it. And yes, we are eighteen months in and there are, there are a lot. I had to I was asked to write an article for, I don't know, school news maybe, or something that was on our uh our climate work because of the the commitment. And uh when I got in touch with Kim about, you know, hey, what have we been doing since this so that I can? And she she did give me, we're not nearly she, you know, at our carbon neutrality commitment, but there was a lot that had already been done and was going on uh beyond just the, you know, and and then new things like the solar panels and and that's the thing that was one of the big things. So there there is a lot going on. I I also agree that I don't think six months is unreasonable to take the things that we're already doing and sort of formalize them beyond that. But but two and three, OE two and OE three, and they're up there because they are such high priorities for us. Um those are, those are new to O'Clare will be the the ones, oh, I'm I'm sure other people have it, but in a sense, but none of our participant groups are particularly new.
So I called Tim earlier today because I wanted to ask if I should even bring it up. Um but the one of the things, so I was looking at OE eight. And then whichever one is board communication with the community, which one is that one?
Uh it's gonna be G C.
I haven't seen it in a minute. Um I don't know, can't find my note now. Anyway, so my my note on OE eight, and it's just something that has been coming up a lot as I've been reading and thinking about communication with our community and how we engage in communication with our community, particularly in our equity lens. And what I don't want us to ever do as a district, this is my personal opinion, is performative. I don't want us to be performative in what we're doing. I want us to be um very intentional. And I and I think that what we miss a lot of times in communication is we get people together all the time. We ask them questions and we listen to them. We don't follow up. We don't show them, here are the things that we did. And and those things that we did because we listened get lost in some muddled report that may or maybe even don't even make it to the board. We see it or the administration knows it, but we don't know it. And I think what ends up happening is that the community says, hey, we told you you didn't actually follow through or you didn't actually do that. And 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 then we're then we're stuck in a, well, we did. And so the incorporate the, so it's it's OE eight three that I was, I made my note on and that it, but it's kind of been a bigger theme that I've been thinking about a lot is seeking input and communicating too. Communicating information out to the community is one thing. FAQs are, you know, one thing, right? Getting this is what we're doing. Here it is. That's that's one thing. From an equity standpoint, we need to say, hey, is this thing that we think we should be doing? Is this really the right thing to do? We need to hear that and we actually need to to change. We actually need to do something different and then communicate the different thing that we've done. And I don't know how to, I don't know where that lies. I don't, this is what I said to Tim is I don't know if that shows up in monitoring. I don't know if that's a monitoring thing. I don't know if that needs to be codified in this document that there will be some sort of active two-way communication with follow-up. Uh but I see all of this sort of one directional communication. But not that not that actual meaningful feedback that our community needs and wants and 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 they deserve because we we might actually be doing the thing that they suggest to us. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I I I guess for me, when I when I when I look at that, uh when I when I look at number three and, you know, I I think commissioners are where where I I think where it's bothersome for me uh is the 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 current, the current practice uh of of the district, especially in its approach of doing uh uh quote unquote, making attempts to do surveys and seek out feedback from either communities uh and and importantly with staff. And uh decisions are already are already made prior to things going up. Now, you know, we we can have a discussion or we can differ in terms of if that's reality or perception, you know, I'll I'll be honest with you. I'm 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 the one to lean towards the it's it's reality. Um and so for me, I I I I think that that part is is important. I think also uh once you, once a survey uh is requested, uh discussions and decisions should not actually be made until uh that information has been shared with the uh uh with 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 those parties. And maybe we can do, uh uh I I think there's a room for room for improvement there if that's where you're you're going with uh uh OE uh OE three. Um but I I I I would, I would also argue, and this is a discussion that I've had constantly before is that I that I I think, you know, as uh as plans and some decisions are are discussed uh down at the district office, those 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 plans and our directions uh not only being shared with, you know, the extended uh supervisor and executive team, but our practitioners should actually uh have an opportunity to actually uh uh be in on these conversations as well and be provided adequate opportunity and time to uh provide that feedback. So if you i- i- if you if your concern is going in that particular di- direction, I, you know, I would concur with uh uh those particular comments. Now, how how that's captured uh in a necessary policy, I I I'm 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 not sure.
Yeah, I'm not convinced that's abstract here. For the record, I just, what I, what I wanted to bring up was that there's a lot of of one, I mean, I think the communication strategy, whatever that vague communication strategy thing there is that could have it in it too. I just, I'm not entirely certain that I see enough in here that says we're actually going to meaningfully listen with you know, with changes. And and I can, I can say this as and I've I've brought up the fam- family advisory council a time or two because I served on it for a long time. I no- nothing that I I never felt like anything I said made any difference whatsoever. It was just a presentation of information. They were communicating information to me. But the nothing ever changed anything. And that's what I I feel like it's, yeah, we talked to the families. Did you? So I that is what I I'm just wondering if we need to be stronger with it. When we say go out and communicate with the community, we mean listen to them, take their feedback and make make reasonable changes to your decision. Don't come at them with the decisions already made. What do you think of the decision? And then go forward with it anyway. So I I just, I'm just not sure. I'm just not sure how we, how and where we do that. And I'll I'll leave it at that, but I yeah.
This this um this thread is related to what I I said a few minutes ago in my mind very closely and um you know, this question of how how is the you know, how are we interfacing with the public, which includes families, which includes staff, which includes others and in the constituency? And um, you know, to me, how it's received is a very important question, especially if I'm being asked to make a decision on something. Um but whether I am or not, it's still a very important question. How is this being received? And I feel it should be an important question to to our our executive team as well and our superintendent. So, you know, that and I guess that's where where it comes for me is this desired, I I feel like there are a lot of I mean, equity is a good example. It's something I'm I'm really so glad that we're doing and it's it's really uh, you know, you get, we see these emails where people just kind of, you know, maybe they're complaining about COVID and then they casually mention equity in some negative way. And it's, you know, so it's it's it seems to me there's part of that initiative has to be the about the conversation with the community and trying to bring more and more of the community along on the journey that we're asking the district to take. And I just don't feel we're doing the best job we could in that regard as a as a leadership team and as a district. And I, you know, um maybe there's nothing more that could be done, but I'm not, I don't know. I feel like just some coordination on talking points and and also bringing forward. When we talk about bringing forward the the alternate viewpoint, addressing it, not just covering it up, but addressing it. And it's maybe not the answer they want to hear, but we're at least answering it and 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 clearly, and and this is why I go back to the FAQs is because and in writing, this is the position of the district. This is how we got here, if you're wondering. And yes, we know about point A, B and C. Here's why they're irrelevant, but you know, thanks, thanks for the discussion. And if you have other questions, send them here. And that we have a process for processing that and for working through through that and within the hopes of bringing more people along to at least a place of of understanding, if not agreement. So uh that that's really what drives my the po- the point I brought up before. I I'm not sure it is exactly aligns with what Commissioners Erin Johnson was saying, but I I it feels like they're 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 in a similar vein.
Well, I appreciate the conversation and I think uh Mike's about to nod along with me when he, when I say that when we were looking for that new superintendent, communication was one of the things that we were hitting over and over again. And, you know, the the four of us that were in that, I, you know, I think we're all in agreement that. Um I would like this, I I would like us to try to refocus on specifically working on the document here and I like we we know that we need to continue to improve our communication. We know that there are things that the district does uh fairly well, and that there are things that the district needs work on. I will note that specifically just right in here as it's written in OE eight, it does in number one say strategic two-way communication, which because it's in there, we will monitor it. And if we do not feel that that strategic two-way communication is happening, then the district is out of compliance. And that is part of uh, you know, Mike's assessment. And so if he's, and if it's out of compliance for enough times, then ultimately, you know, like we have, that's our hammer. So that specific two-way thing is in there. Uh it it may or may not be perfect and I then that's fine. But I would like to, if we could just refocus on like, what do we need to work on in the document as opposed to like, yeah, we we know that communication is something that we all need to work on as individuals and as an organization. Um but like, if we can just refocus on just like, what do we need to change in this? So when we come to the first reading, we're ready to to discuss it and really consider it going forward.
Well, folks, I think we 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 found our governance officer, folks. So that 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 that's good. So yeah, it so for for me, I I I I would just like to just address just two uh two, two points with the document. If we could uh I I I I know that the conversation about OE three was pretty uh uh pretty thorough. I guess uh my my ish, my issue with the OE three and the timelines. Uh any climate commitment is uh and we, I guess we can debate on this, but it's not time for the debate, but uh in in any climate commitment is aligned with actually budgetary uh uh resources. And having timelines and not including information as it pertains to budgetary resources, I I I I think that that makes no sense uh personally. Uh but in in, so I I have no, no problems with your timelines, but that 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 talk about a climate commitment and not realize that co- climate commit co- commitment is directly tied to actually budgetary resources to actually do that. I I for me, that 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 it doesn't really it it doesn't rationalize. And so that that was, that was my first point. That was a question, a question or a comment that I had about OE three. For me to really feel comfortable with these, because it seems like these are like pretty straightforward timelines. There has to be some language and or uh that also that the budgetary commitment aligns with the uh with the timeline set forth. And so um I I I I think that has to uh has to at least be discussed and put in there. And then my other uh my my other uh concerning comment, uh question, uh if we can go up to R uh R two, that's eight six uh student results. Um students will be literate and numerate, able to engage in critical thinking. So I I I I I take uh adults, there are many adults that are unable to actually engage in critical thinking. And so it's the, it's what what we're trying to do is uh 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 equipped uh the students in the kit cage with 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 the skill sets or that process of moving towards that. And so I I'm just curious, is is that just you, we take that from somewhere and because for me, it would be just as fine as people to analyze, evaluate, integrate, just ultimately through both educational and lived experiences. Individuals get to that ability to critically think. Uh but I I would, I would argue that actually not everyone actually has the the ability to critical thinking. And then one, one last other little small piece, uh and and like I said, we it doesn't have to be in there, but synthesize uh kind of just given where we are and where I think our society would go. I would actually like to see factual information there. Uh all 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 information is not viable, actually. Uh so uh factual uh information and R two. So those are, those are the only two comments that I had about the document after uh looking over. Thank you.
So I appreciate that. Um just to, I was, I'm looking through, I I actually, I really, but I wanted to start with the one that you brought up on OE three. Uh that really connects with me and I and I'm look, you see me looking down while you're talking. It's because I have my hard copy here. I'm trying to look through and see if we rolled that into anything in one of the budget OEs. And I I'm not actually don't know that we did. So I think that maybe we, I would be happy to write in a line uh in or ha- ask Lori to add it in uh in OE three uh regarding you know, uh tuning budgetary, unless I missed it somewhere. So maybe Lori or Phil, you can help me out. Uh that that would that would be too budgetary, like, you know.
The timeline on OE three is is aligning with the twenty fifty uh commitment that the city's also made.
And the county.
And the county. So what what we put in there, and I didn't write OE three, uh I wrote the the budget one, so I'm, I kick it back to Lori, but I remember from our conversation that that point coming up. I remember from our conversation that, that point coming up. And that. It seemed like. If the school district, the county and the city were all kind of pulling together and pulling in the same direction on the same timeline. That. And that's why that, that was defined that way.
Would it, would it be for the superintendent to, uh, and the, and the executive team to? To work out, would that not be a, an operational detail, the, the budget? I mean, I, I know that we've held on to compensation questions and things like that, but. In terms of the proposals for them to bring those forward as part of their charge to. To make it so.
Yeah, I, I thought, what I thought I heard you say, Markwell, was that you wanted just some language to also note that we would be aligning our budget with this priority. Not necessarily like how to do it, but that we would make the, you know, the budgetary effort necessary to do that.
Yeah. And then that's correct. And like I said, I, 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 I guess maybe some of you are more, uh, uh, climate conscious, environmental conscious. Overall argument as none of this moves without actually a budgetary. So we could have as many timelines as we want, whether they align with the city or county. And, you know, I think, uh, uh, uh. Commissioner Alliance knows, knows more than this, but, uh, because our budgetary reliance is in different sources, individuals. May be able to move in different ways with that particular commitment. So for me, it's just saying that. Uh, whatever timeline and whatever commitment that we have, that it's also aligned. Cause that, that, that goes to those difficult decision-making that would actually have to take place. From a superintendent, because you, you, you think about, do you, uh, uh. Do you, uh, you know, sacrifice and or strategically plan to commit resources to. Time the commitment, but you may not be able to do an extracurricular programming, right? And so, you know, you, you, you have to kind of. So that's kind of what I was thinking. Thank you.
So I would kind of view it as maybe like one sentence, and I don't know how well you can see it, you know, blowing up on the share screen, but maybe right after this, you know. Longer term targets for each five-year period thereafter. Uh, you know, I might write a sentence that just said, you know, this plan should, should incorporate budgetary commitments or considerations. That would be like the whole. You know, just to have that. Put in there. And that would be my, my thing. Lori, it looks like you're ready to say something. So I'm open to other things too, but that's how I would view it.
I guess I, I just assumed that all of these would, uh, would, uh, go that way. I, I don't know what, what would make climate different from. Anything else. Everything's dependent on the budget.
I concur.
I think what I don't want to do is. I don't want to make climate the exception. You know, I, and I, I'm not saying that that one sentence is going to do it, but. You know. Uh. I, I don't want it to be the let, you know, we, I don't want it to be the last thing. I don't want it to always be the last thing, you know? Um, everything's dependent on the budget. And in many ways, the climate commitment, you actually save. You know, it creates district savings. Um, not the other way around.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would just counter with that. I, I'm not sure how. Uh, I, I guess I would argue back that I'm not sure seven through nine, the communication pieces, how, how. Our communication pieces tied to the budget. Those are, those are expectations that like, like have to happen. And so. Uh, I, 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 I understand that piece and, and to that, to that point where. If, if, if you're, if you're making a commitment, budgetary, you will be able to articulate. What those savings are and then potentially how those savings will be utilized otherwise. And so. Uh, it wa- it, it, it was just a thought. Like I said, for me though, I, 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 I would read. As, as, as a community member, for me, well, that's, it's aspirational. If I, if operation expectations are supposed to be operational and I don't get that one from reading, uh. This Austin and Quinn, uh, uh, text, then that's fine. But I, I would say whatever goals that you have. Especially as it relates to climate, offer some of the other pieces that you guys are saying that are directly tied to budget. If, 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 if it's, if there's not a, a concrete pieces to make those correct, then it's just aspirational. And, uh, you know, I think Dr. Beaker, you and I actually as, uh, employees of the university, we're, 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 we're very fond of actually. Aspirational initiatives that actually go, 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 go nowhere. So that, that's really, that was my take, but it. It was just kind of one of those things that I think, because I read it and I'm fine either way.
So I, I did finally find the thing that was in my brain that I was looking for, and it's in OE eleven. And I wonder if this hits. Maybe, uh, Markwell, you might want it specifically in OE three there, but this sentence is, is something that we put, that Phil put into OE eleven and we worked through in our draft. Um. You know, with respect to the ongoing, you know, it says what ensure that, and I did use ensure instead of ensure there. That management of, or Phil did, of financial resources continues to reflect the district's commitment to racial, social and environmental justice. So that, that does say that our financial administration does need to reflect that commitment. And I, I don't know if that hits it for you. You know, as a, I know it's not right there in number three, but is that, that, that to me is what I think that you're getting at.
Well, as a. As a community planner, what the, what I say is our, our values are not found in our vision statement. They're found in our budget. So, um. Again, there's, there, that's also a problem in. In, in my profession that they come up with all these like great rainbow, you know, vision statements and. Whatnot. And then you look at the budget and you say, where is it? Um, or you come to voting on a actual policy and it does, and you don't follow that, what your vision says. So. You know, I, but back to, to Lori's point, I think all of their policies are based on the budget. And I don't think we need to, to kind of, uh. Qualify it anywhere except for perhaps right here.
Okay. Uh. So maybe we'll leave it kind of as it is, uh, for now. Let's move on to, let's move back then to R two. That was Markwell's second thing. Um, Mark, I had a question when you said, um. I, I can see how it would read just fine with taking out the to engage in critical thinking. Um, are you saying that, that, that some people do not engage in critical thinking? Or are you saying that some people are inherently unable to use critical thinking? That's why I was a little confused when you were going through what you were saying.
So, so I, that, that's, that skill set. That attribute. All, everyone does not have. And it, you, you build, you build towards critical thinking. So. The way I read this, it, it's this underlying assumption that it, it's already present and we're building on it. And so, no. I, I, I would, I, from a, from a, from my knowledge of, from my knowledge of, 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 of development, that's not really. You could, you could reach adulthood and there are some adults that actually do not have the ability to critically, critically think. And so for me, it's building up. And that's, that, that's that, that ultimate piece, but that ultimate piece comes with continuous. Uh, uh, learning experiences and the, uh, providing of appropriate factual information. To, to build, to build up to that. And so for me. The, the K-12 public educational setting is, is building up to that. And so I. That once again, you know, I, you know, I, I really, that, that's making an underlying assumption that, you know, we. We interact with, you know, like I, I have, I have undergraduate students who, uh, don't have that ability to critically, critically think. And, uh, they will graduate with a re-skill, uh, with that, uh, inability to. Do that. So for me, I, I would just like to, if it was possible, able to analyze, evaluate and, you know. Still, you know, that, that also makes an underlying assumption that all of our educators actually, uh, 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 pedagogically. Uh, uh, teach in a way that actually fosters this particular development. And I, 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 I would argue that, uh. Uh, the educational system in general, there's, uh, 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 retention and, uh. Repetition of actually factual information that does not actually constitute critical thinking. That's just, uh, my perspective. Thank you.
I guess that's why I'd argue that it's all the more important to keep that in there because the, the object should be for us to achieve that. The, the results. You know, when you talk about things that are aspirational, the results are aspirational. And the, the, the monitoring of these will not be. Did that happen? You know, it says students will be literate, numerate and able to do these things. We, we know that not every student is going to reach that. Uh, they, when we know that every student is not reaching that now. But our, our monitoring here will be, is the district making reasonable process of progress toward achieving those results? And that, and, and if we think that, that critical thinking. Or the ability to analyze, evaluate, integrate and synthesize information are important. Values and results. And it certainly was something that we, I think. Uh, we saw in our survey of families. That this was part of what they were asking for from the district. I think that's why we should leave it in there because then it allows the district to be monitored on it and to be held accountable for making progress. Uh, we know that. You know, there will be some sort of curve and we hope to move that curve more towards like when they graduate, they are able to do, every student is able to do that thing. But the reality, you know, is that they're certainly not at that point now. And. But that, leaving it in there would allow us to, to have that as a point of accountability for the district.
I, if, if, if I, if I, if I could, uh. Tim, I guess for me, what, but then what I would argue then is actually, uh, the, the, the district and the leadership will be responsible. Uh, your items, the items that are in one or two. That individuals would be, be bringing forth artifacts, none of that actually demonstrates critical thinking. Any artifacts from one or two would actually not be that critical thinking piece. It could be the other aspects of analyze, evaluate, but that critical thinking piece there. So for me, it's just really where you're saying that we're holding. They, there could not be a, a, well, as right now, I just don't envision based on. Uh, uh, items, one, and students will be one and two. I, I, I just can't envision actually an artifact coming from there that would demonstrate critical thinking, but I could, uh, could be wrong.
Well, the policy is monitored as a whole. So just because there are things in one and two, it is not only one and two that get monitored. It's the top part as well. And there will, and you know, the nice. And maybe this is lazy on my part, but the nice thing for a board member is that we don't have to determine, to figure out. What are the artifacts that show those things? That's work that we're assigning to the superintendent and his team. They have to figure out how to prove that to us. Now we can help if we have ideas, I'm sure, but the, like. The whole thing will be monitored. And so like in addition to showing that students are achieving it individually appropriate in these one and two. They're going to have to bring evidence that they're fulfilling the first part as well. And. You know, and maybe it's, maybe there's not a test that they're giving to say, how are you critical thinking? But there's evidence to say, we're providing these particular lessons or these skills. Or here's students that are doing those things. I, I'm not certain what it looks like. But it will be required to show that.
And I will just say from the perspective of feedback. On academic results from the community. It wasn't so much. I mean, it was that, that our community wants our kids to learn what you see in one and two. But it was really that they wanted them to be able to use what they know. To impact their community. That was really what parents were getting at in their answers. Um. Was utilization. Of the information that they are learning within the walls of our school. And so I, I do think that there is, that there is merit, not just to, they know math. How do they use math? How are they applying math? How are they? Doing all those things, synthesizing it and integrating it into other components of their education. That is the stuff that. Um. And then knowing when to do that, knowing what information is useful to use when and where. That's critical thinking. And I think. That's our, our families do. Value that. Our community does value that. Um, now. Whether critical thinking is, is academic. Um. Or if it's more in personal development, I, that I, that I, that's an argument I'd be willing to. Make, but I think it, I think it belongs here.
One thing I'd like to add is that. If we're able to, and this actually goes along with the. Um, a bit with communication is. You know, and looking at timelines and calendar, for example, for an R two. You know, we develop goals. Um, with our principals and with our SIP planning, our school improvement planning. Um, in teaching and learning work. So obviously these goals. Um. On academic performance, these results. Well, when we communicate with the SIP teams at each school. This is getting input from teachers on, well, how would we demonstrate this? Or what would be the? The appropriate, what would be our appropriate, um. Levels of performance, uh, where we can prove that engagement or can we not? And I think it goes not just the executive team developing this in isolation. But, you know, we, if it's a school improvement process and a school improvement plan. We have to have more than one or two, um, people at the table. So. Um, you know, looking back, not just on R two, but going back to that communication part. Um, you know, I'm very reflective. I think our, our administrative team and exec team would share that. Um. In every decision we're making, especially lately. But to be able to. Address those types of things like an R two, that initial statement. Um. I, I, I really do. I think. Sharing these, these goals and these results. What would be the expectations with the principals and their SIP teams as well, so that. We can articulate that when it comes to measurement.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the idea that these are aspirational and that. Our, our graduating seniors probably won't achieve this to the, to the fullest measure that we might hope, but I, I think it's important to measure. I do think it raises the question of how it's going to be measured as Superintendent Johnson just alluded to, I think, but. But you know. How it's going to be measured and I, 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 I guess my feeling is I prefer to have this in here in some attempt at it. Uh, than, than to remove it.
One very small thing about R two is I think we have to replace the word, uh, school building with probably something like school context.
So are there other items that, that people want to talk about? We have 14 minutes remaining.
I just had a word that I thought maybe would be worthwhile adding under, um, OE five, three. Uh, would we want to add the word bias in there?
Uh, so let me just pull that. So we ensure student mental and physical health by promoting proper exercise, nutrition and sleep. Environments free from bullying, discrimination or other forms of intimidation. So you would say bullying, discrimination, bias. Or other forms of intimidation?
Yes.
Any reactions one way or the other? And I'm gonna, uh. Make sure that Lori doesn't have one more Oxford comment to catch. So I'll make sure I get the comment in there as well. Other items or thoughts? Again, we'll have time to, you know, kind of to dwell on this discussion and we'll have time to discuss again on Monday at the. You know, when we get to the, the policy first read. So.
I know something I really prefer to talk about with y'all here first is, um. The idea of board diversity. I don't know if that, so this was from a comment, Tim, that I made. It goes way back to early January and I don't know if that ever came up in policy and governance or not, but. I think it's within, well, I, I began thinking about it in governance culture. And it was in, um. Uh, GC two. Because that's where, um. So GC two down to three C. Um, that's the place where it's talking about hearing and amplifying voices, historically marginalized groups. Yep, right there. Mm-hmm. So that was where I had put in a comment about, um, trying to think about, um. Just as we think about. And, and having these documents, you know, a commitment to diversity in hiring of all. All levels of the organization. I wondered about how, how would we express or operationalize a commitment to maintaining Burt? Board diversity. That the board actually matches our community diversity. And I, I thought that that was one of the most important things that a, a board or school district or community could do for marginalized groups is to get members of those groups on the board. Uh, and then I thought about what, what's our commitment to diversity in the membership of board committees if there, you know, there will be board committees, but. Um, I'd really like to talk just a little bit about that with people before we go into a more public. Um, what I, what I've been. Um, what I what I've been surprised by, um you know, in the old days, so if you're recruiting and even you're recruiting for diversity, you know, in the old days, I mean, recruitment was is kind of passive. You know, you just say, you know, you kind of cast out your net and uh you know, catch what kind of comes by, but you know, that that doesn't work. And I've been surprised by how passive, um I guess you could say we are about recruiting for the board. And if we're, you know, how would we want? I I don't I don't if 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 arguably, you could say the school board is the most important group in the district. I'm just saying, okay? Um, how can you not have that represent the district?
Lori, I totally agree with you. Totally. And I didn't know where to put it or where to say or where to ask for it. But it was, I have been attending monk PTA meetings since the start of the school year. And they asked me to give them information in December, their group information in December about about running for the board and I I asked answered a lot of questions from community members about the process there um and in how to do it. Um, and I was, you know, very hopeful, um but I I I kept thinking this is this is just a shot, right? That they happened to have me and they happened, I happened to be able, like, there's no process by which we actually do that. So I agree entirely and it was on my brain today before um the meeting. So thank you for bringing it up.
Well, you know, I I I guess, uh, you know, I I probably should not comment. I difficult pieces, given the the fact that, you know, you uh this requires uh voting from the a community that is a a majority, a a majority, majority white. Um, and uh I would I would I would also say in that recruitment um and I I I think also making aware uh kind of some of the uh public sentiments that uh individuals who find themselves in marginalized groups will uh will receive and how that particularly information is uh is 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 taken, you know, I can, you know, I can tell you, uh, you know, I think for me, um, you know, I I have the emails to uh should actually delete those emails. I have some of the emails to uh to demonstrate that, uh, you know, the the whole equity equity push in the district. This public sentiment, uh, I I I personally have forced all other six members as well as actually the executive team uh down at five hundred Main Street to move in this direction by some form of uh intimidation, which uh, you know, I it it it's okay, you know, but in 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 my role, how how do you how do you prepare someone? So you know, I think to Commissioner Zerish point where, you know, make them aware of of the process. But there's 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 also more to it in terms of that reflect the piece of the intake of actually a public sentiment, which is not always the uh the the most positive, uh how not to actually take it personally. And I I can assure some of you that some of the emails that I have, no one else actually received those. Uh, so I I I can, I am pretty much, I'm I'm positive about that. So uh Lori, I I think there's there's two points, you know, uh anytime uh uh mandating actually like diversity makeup is 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 a is a trigger issue for individuals, especially majority, majority communities, but also the uh the process of, you know, that it has to be you know, individual has to be voted in. But I I I I would encourage, I would encourage a diverse makeup of 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 a school board, you know, that's really, that's really the reason that I decided I was talking with Dr. Torres to uh even even consider this, you know, uh even though Dr. Torres was not completely honest with me about that, she, uh, that's a bad joke, but he was, he was, I think he was pretty pretty clear about what is happening, but that's that's the only reason I did because I think representation matters. And on the positive side, you know, some of the uh some of the emails that I've received from some of the members, uh, 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 community members, fellow that 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 matters, you know, this to see to see my things uh 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 on uh on the board, it 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 matters. So there's just a a couple of other things that we, you know, if if this is something that that's really going to be pursued, I think that we we just have to be really not only intentional uh 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 about it, but really uh deliberate in in the level of expectations and what individuals would be uh to kind of uh receive as it relates to to public.
I I guess I'll just say quickly, I think the the idea of of board development in this vein, uh particularly with the I think anybody running for the board should be should be warned and and I think Dr. Johnson's caveats are particularly important. If we are working on outreach, but I think board development and and board recruitment, I I I think is is a potentially an incredibly powerful tool and one that would be a missed opportunity if we didn't if we aren't at least thinking about it. And you know, maybe we can think of a reason why we definitively should not do it, but I I I do think it's it's an it's an important tool.
I think I I must have put it in with, and I'm not going to be able to find this spot now, but considering the idea of having board officers like that, well, that there would be positions that would be dedicated to develop like well, recruitment, I mean recruitment and mentoring. And that would become, you know, it's it's part of the responsibilities of 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 an office or or multiple officers, I don't know, but the fact that we don't really have anything systematic in place and it's kind of like of of all things, board membership is is kind of just left to chance in a way.
Sounds like a great uh kind of board retreat item as as I think about the operational expectations and how we're kind of putting these documents together to to guide the superintendent. I think outside of that operational expectation, I think that the board can take on a role of recruitment and 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 mentoring of a board that isn't essentially an all white board. But I think it's kind of dangerous for us to call anybody else but board members to do that. I think it it really could become a dangerous uh kind of thing exactly for the the purposes that it is an elected position in most in most cases.
No, I was saying that board members would be char- board members only would be charged with entering, yeah.
Uh, being a part of the board is something that I wanted to do. I know it's something that all of you wanted to do as well. And as a white guy sitting here, knowing that I'm part of what is needed less of on this board, it it feels a little weird to me to say, I want to go out and get somebody to run against me so that I can lose. Uh although maybe there's some benefits in in that. So I I I struggle with that a little bit, but I I of course are like we we should be working striving to have a board that is representative of the community. You know, both across race and gender and and a number of other things. You know, just as a with it's nine o'clock right now, I maybe we don't need to have I could, you know, we could just throw, put something in, this is about communicate the communication part. Um, but in, you know, C one, you know, in alignment with the district's commitment to equity, the board will intentionally seek to engage here and amplify voices. Uh, here and amplify voices, uh, I could put something in like and recruit for board membership. You know, I could I could just put a sentence in there that would would put us on our governing commitment for the board. Or we could leave it for further discussion like at a board retreat. I mean, so that would be something that's just very small and would fit in with that. But yeah, we we also have had some statement, you know, if we put if we put something in there that that sneaks in there as, you know, mandatory diversity, that's gonna inflame some in the community wrongly, but it will. But I don't know, I guess we've not been afraid of of standing for equity so far and, you know, I we have not gotten all the same emails, but we have gotten some of those same emails. And so, you know, what's one more nudge into the direction of justice? So I you know, is that something that we want to do? I could just add a couple of words there about recruit for board membership? It would still be on us to, you know, this is on us to self-monitor these things and actually do them, but that would give us, you know, the little kick in the pants to.
I would be more supportive if we actually made a statement about it, though. I mean, even if it's just a goal, even if it's pie in the sky.
So again, I want to, we are, we are past time made already had to leave, so we we need to just work on the policy aspect that then we can work on the the bigger, you know, the statements or the actual actions later. So I guess I think in in general, do you all want me to uh add that little bit in there or leave it and we'll continue to work on it?
Add it.
Okay. Or Lori, did you want to add something there? I mean, you were that was your idea and maybe you would have the idea. I mean, I can do, I mean, I think it's like three or four words. It might not be a lot, but if you wanted to do it, you're welcome to do that as well. I don't have to make every change.
No, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Um, so we'll get done here. Um, I'll I'll go through these these changes that we have where I've commented on each one. I'll clean it up. I'll have it a new version of it ready for you, uh, and it'll go to Maida to be out. That'll be the version that we'll have for our first reading on the fifth. So and then we can have more, you know, if there's more discussion on the fifth, because we'll be in the meeting, we may have to, you know, make changes via like the amendment process. Um, but that doesn't have to be a big, big issue either. So yeah, so thanks, everybody. Anybody want to motion to adjourn for us?
Second.
And I'm not even going to call the question. We're just going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Uh, good night and we'll see you next Monday for our second of four in a row.
Good night.
Good night.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.